I'll ask that, John, can you come up?
Yes, sir.
We have two recognitions for the high school and we'd like to have that.
Yes. Senator Bennett Halligan, Chairman, Members of Board of Education. Good evening. Good to see you, everyone. John, would you be my right here?
Yes, we'll do.
If I'm all right, can I take it out? All right, sir.
Just don't say it.
I will. I promise you don't want that.
Everyone, we've got a couple of recognitions we'd like to make tonight. And on behalf of the Board of Education in the Green County school system, I would like to take a moment to recognize and congratulate the boys, Green County Boys Basketball Team for an outstanding season. Their dedication, hard work, and remarkable achievements have truly made our community proud. Reaching the state final four is an incredible accomplishment and is a testament to the talent and perseverance of these young athletes. We'd also like to extend a special congratulations to Coach Mark Wright, who has been recognized as the Region 8A Coach of the Year. Coach Wright's leadership, dedication, and commitment to the development of his players has been invaluable in the team's success and his passion for the sport and his ability to inspire and guide his team have made a lasting impression on these student-athletes in our community. Once again, congratulations to the Green County Boys Basketball Team, Coach Wright, on an unforgettable season and we are so proud of each of them and grateful for the way they have represented our school and community with pride and with excellence. And then, I have Coach Wright. Dr. James Vitiguzo will take his award for it. So, thank you. And then, Dr. James, still need you one more time.
Okay.
And I have another special recognition tonight, which we're always glad to showcase the talents and abilities of the Green County school system, which are many. And we want to make sure that we want to recognize all the people that do. So move.
Drive a second.
Second.
No discussion? Everyone in favor? Shouldn't try to raise your right hand? Vote? Thank you. There are no public comments today? Okay. Take the action agenda.
Mr. Chairman, the action agenda is longer than I, we'll try to take it as quickly as we can. Item number one is proposal for the delegation of legislative positions for GSDA. And we, last month, for those of you right here, we had a number of these that we wanted to either change or challenge. And so, we listed them out separately, so that's what we're doing on the first floor about these. Recommendation is for the Green County Board of Education to submit a proposal to the Georgia School Board Association requesting the deletion of Legislative Position 1C2 vouchers.
Is there any discussion on this item? Discussion, okay. I have a kind of motion to approve the reading of this item?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Since there was no discussion before, I would like to vote. All those in favor, should I try to raise my right hand? All those opposed?
Item number two is a summary proposal. The recommendation is for the Green County Board of Education to submit a proposal to the Georgia School Board Association requesting the deletion of Legislative Position 1C3 accountability.
I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at this. Kind of put some conus on people that aren't necessarily required to do that at this point in time. To do that, so, anyway. Any discussion on this item? A discussion? Is there a motion to approve this item? Anyone?
Seven.
Second? Second. Second, thank you. All those in favor, should I try to raise my right hand? All those opposed? Three, two.
Item number three is, again, a summary proposal. Recommendation is for the Green County Board of Education to submit a proposal to the Georgia School Board Association requesting amendment to Legislative Position 3B9, Assessments, Aligning Standards, Read, the Georgia Department of Education to stop the use of high-stakes testing assets at Institute and Institute-accomplish-based testing systems that could be administered when students are being ready for testing by the institution.
Any questions or discussion? Any maintain a motion to approve this item?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, should I try to raise my right hand? All those opposed? Four. Thank you.
Action item number four. Recommendation is for the Green County Board of Education to submit a proposal to the Georgia School Board Association requesting the deletion of Legislative Position 3C1 charter vouchers.
Any discussion on this item?
Let me pull that up where I can read it. We're, school, this is, this one's been a little confusing for me. Charter schools currently are under the governance of the local school boards, not all of them. Local. By who here, yeah, in Green County. Right. So. Who, are they going to be state? State?
I think, I, my personal opinion is, I think, I think that's where this comes up short. I think they have to, they have to clarify this, what their position really is. Because as you said, they're, but they don't have any control over, over the state schools. So, they, I mean, have, and have some control and some oversight over the state charter schools also. I think there's just a clarity issue.
Well, that's the thing, that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. This is confusing and hard to understand. It just needs to be reworded, reworded.
Yeah, don't, don't feel bad. There's thirty-seven deals out there proposing new laws for school systems. And I heard them are on this, and they're all over the place.
Okay. Have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second? Second? All those in favor, right hand? All those opposed?
I just want to see it reworded.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
And if we believe it, they have to. Because they're going to have, okay, then, then may I change my vote? Okay.
Okay, item number five. Oh, that was.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item number six.
No, you're on fire.
Dr. Seid, they're all similar. Recommendation is for the Green County Board of Education to submit a proposal to the Georgia School Board Association requesting the deletion of Legislative Position 4.5, Support Public Education, Not Excellent Vouchers.
I will, yeah, I'll make a statement here. I support public education. That's not the issue here. My kids all come to public schools and I'm at public schools. That's not the issue here. But that's, to me, it's just not always been the option for everyone. And I think for voucher program, I see the spirit of voucher program is, is for those people that don't have the means to be able to leave the area or, or to move to a different school and run their school systems. So, I just, I, I think that needs to be an option for some families around the state. That's why, I, I ask to have this taken up.
Well, the one thing I'm a little unclear about, and looking at some of the others, when it describes who vouchers would apply to. There's no real clarity on home schools, you know?
I think right now, the way the laws read right now, they'd have to come out of, they would have to come out of a traditional public school and, and apply for voucher.
For a home school.
For, for anyone to get the voucher. And, and I think they have a, they have a threshold in terms of these performance of the, the schools are coming out of. Which is not anywhere.
And so, the school would have to be a failing school?
Yes. Yes.
Failing school system?
Any other discussion, comments? I think we might maintain a motion to approve this.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, right hand? All those opposed? Okay. Two, three. Do that one by five? Six.
Item number six, recommendation is authorize the board's delegate to vote to approve the twenty, twenty-five GSD legislative positions that's submitted by the Georgia School Board Association.
Now, my understanding is how we're writing this, how to write this is which are, which are?
So, so whatever changes get made, we're authorizing our delegate to vote.
Okay, so that's what this is for. And all the other pieces we are supporting. So that's what this is for. Okay. Anyone unclear about overbooking them? Okay. Anyone having comments about overbooking them? Okay, item number, is there a motion to approve this?
So move.
Second? Okay, but I have a motion in second. All those in favor, right, right hand for approval?
Just as a matter of comment, and I think you'll agree, they do vote on each and every one of these. And the likelihood of us opposing something that they put out is, yeah. So, anyway, yeah.
I would like to make a comment too on this. I, I appreciate everybody looking through these and working on this and putting their feelings and, we don't have to, you know, we're not going to do that everything. And, and that's, we should, we have different opinions and, so I appreciate your honesty and your work. That's very good, and I look forward to it. Thanks a ton, I appreciate it. Okay?
So, item number seven is in regard to Policy BBC. Recommendation is to approve the proposed Policy BBC Board Committees, which has been on table coming through.
Do I have any comments or discussion?
The East Plus Committee's the first one moving.
So, we're going to, we're going to give a couple of mentions. We didn't try to pop that on that one.
Some of like, we did get guests here, we probably just moved that stall and have to run it off. Just wait to know, you give another minute, do you? I'm going to make sure we have chairs.
Somebody was unhappy with the logo.
Sorry, daughter, I did prop the door open.
Is everybody okay if we use our flashlights and go to paper and finish the meeting where we're at?
We're good.
Yes, just a comment on the.
Committee? My, my question was, we, this is the first committee I can remember. So, for the East Plus Committee, our next step, if this is approved, is what's going to put together that is. No, no, we don't, we don't have. What I'm saying is, is there separate things in there talking about settings, guidelines, and so forth and so on? Is that something the board does, or the?
No.
Or, or you, you and your team?
Yeah, I, I think.
That's my only disc.
Are we coming back into session? Okay, let me clear everybody up back here.
All those in favor are, are, I mean, a motion to approve?
Did you think you're not so move?
Thank you.
Second?
Second? All those in favor, right hand? And, and I, you know, one thing I would do want to mention to, to the public is, is I think there's a lot of people have the understanding that you have to have a motion in a second concluding that discussion on the item. And we cleared that up at the, at the, at the state meeting and training for, you know, for meetings. And so, that's not the case. I don't think we should go into that in a second. Just got some idea about what we're discussing. So, it's a little different format, but it is within the范子of Robert Trumbull.
Item number eight. So, number eight, recommendation is to declare the four buses listed below as surplus property. Miss Weaver out there?
Yes, sir, I believe so. I will find you.
You may go answer this question. When I read this, what's usually the mileage? Lifetime mileage for, for a bus?
Well, so, it, it, it's a great question. The, the problem with international buses is that's based on hours.
Okay.
And, and so, in this case, she was saying that all the buses that, that pass is a regional amount of, of, of working on them. And she, she, when she came in, what was that, about eight, is it? She, she said that international buses were part of the school system because they do hour a lot, wear them out rather quickly. So, her recommendation was to do the bluebird buses, and that's, that's the reason we've been going. And these are some of the last ones, the last ones.
These mileage pieces, we didn't see.
No, that's why, that's a good question.
If we're only just having miles on buses, we need some time on the bus.
Joe, Joe is, yes, everyone. So, I gave, I gave them the ma, the hour, hours of operation to answer.
Okay.
Okay, and so, you may not have any questions, but.
Okay.
The only question I have is, where, where do we stand on the replacement status? We, we talked about this years and years ago. When you came in, we kind of looked at getting a replacement for the fleet. So, where do we stand on that?
First of all, good evening to everyone. Board Chair, Misses, the attending, Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you again and present. Right now, as we stand with, since two thousand and eighteen, this board has approved twenty-one buses to be purchased through local funds and QBD funding from the state. So, with the ten-year bus replacement plan, we're at thirteen buses that still fall between that ten-year mark for being replaced. So, we're doing really great over the last six years. We've been able to really upgrade our fleet a lot. But I still have about thirteen buses that we utilize on routes that's, you know, past that ten-year mark, or coming up to that ten-year period. So, with that being said, if we purchase three buses each year over the next three years, then we wouldn't have to purchase any more buses as long as everything goes well, until about twenty-third.
How much support does the state give us on bike buses?
Um, it's been varying over the years since two thousand and eighteen. I think we started out, um, when, I think that first year, they probably gave us about two buses. Since then, um, based on, everything's based on documentation from our superintendent's report that we do outside of transportation. And since that time, I have the opportunity to clean it up and make it be what it needs to be. Since then, there have been allocated us six buses. And last year, I think they don't understand, because the more we upgrade our fleet and it shows the less need, then that was numerous decrease over the years, so.
So, it is, it is a cash number, it's, it's due to need, and then?
That is correct.
The X number of buses meet that.
That's correct. Based on that superintendent's report, um, the information that's inside that, um, report shows what buses that we have utilizing on routes. If we have a bus that's X number of years old, based on that information and the number of miles that it travels, that's what dictates how many buses, and of course, the size of the car.
Just, just for everybody to understand, what's about the average cost of a bus?
An average cost of a bus now somewhere around a hundred, forty, hundred fifty thousand basic, without doing any types of upgrades to it.
When you say basic, she, I think what she's referring to is they don't give us enough money to put air, air conditioner in the bus we have to get up.
That's right. Air conditioning, camera systems, things like that. Those are upgrades to the bus. Just a basic bus with nothing added to it, about forty thousand. But when we start adding on the security, safety features of the bus, like cameras, you know, illuminated signage on the bus to show where the bus is stopping, reflected things, and things like that, then the cost feels.
So, it's not included with the stop, all the stop equipment?
Yes, it has stop forms and things like that. It, it comes with a basic bus with stop forms, crossing guards, things like that. But as it relates to AC, camera system, radios, and things like that, we have to pay extra for those stuff.
Any other questions? May I have any votes to approve this?
So move.
All those in favor, should I try by saying aye? Can't say it anyway.
Next item is, item number nine. Recommendation is to approve the purchase of four hundred Renault 3E convo for Lakeview Academy, Ferris LLC, with a non-hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And, Chris, could you give some background in terms of where that money is coming from?
So, every year, LOA has an allotment of East Plus funds that they can spend. And, and this, in this last charter, that amount is somewhere around five hundred thousand a year. And so, they will come back next month. They, they had a hiccup in part of this. I think they'll come back to keep it. They asked you for carts to keep out there?
He's in the back.
They are. They're coming back for those charging carts.
Charging carts, okay. But they, they, they have significant funds to spend.
Any other questions?
How often do you leave your places?
So, these, these are actually convo's, and, and they typically are supposed to have now a four-year lifetime. And so, we try to stretch that, but, you know, the license and all that, it's better to go ahead and buy new ones.
Do they also buy charging carts also?
They will come back. They, they had a problem with the way they figured it out or something. I, I don't really know what the hiccup was, but, but they'll come back next month.
And they still have funds to cover those?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Any intent to make a difference?
So move?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, should I try by five? I say aye? Opposed, same sign? Ten?
Item number ten. Recommendation is to approve overnight physical request for Green County High School students to attend the CPI State Leadership Conference in, in Georgia, and that's at Rockyville, on April sixteenth to eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Any questions, comments? Let me ask, oh, that's one. What's the advantage, since it's just in Eaton, then? What's the advantage of staying over and doing there? Are there programs that things in the evenings that they would, would ever miss?
I have that. John, can you, can you come over here and answer this question, please?
Yes, sir.
John, my question is, what advantage, when it's supposed to be in, what advantage or what information or experience would they miss might come home in the evenings, residents stay?
For the students going to.
Rockyville.
Uh, those, those meetings, they, a lot of them have, they have activities after hours for the students to have as far as like social engagement. So, they have like little dances and things like that. And then also in the mornings, they usually start very early. So, they have the breakfast and everything and move into those particular areas right away.
Where, where are the rest of the students coming from statewide?
Yes, all over. So, they get a lot of social activities that they have, meet students from other organizations.
Any other questions or comments? I entertain a motion to approve this?
So move.
Second?
Second?
Okay, motion in second. All those in favor, right, of this one? Should I say aye?
Aye.
Vote same sign?
Item number eleven. Recommendation is to approve overnight physical request for the Green County High School track and field team to attend the GHSA State Track and Field Improv in Houston, Albany. From May eighth to tenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Do you have any questions or comments about this?
How many students, do you have an idea of how many students?
Seventy-seven, seven boys, seven girls, a part of eight and eight. Really good.
Never rate qualified. Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve this document? Item?
So move.
Uh, second, please?
Second.
All those in favor, should I try by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Item number twelve. Recommendation is to approve the Pearson and Davidson LLC for performance superintendent search for an amount not to exceed with our prior approval, nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety dollars.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, did we clear up the couple of issues we had with that contract?
We did. I, I, I had attorneys draw it up. They gave me a redline version. I sent it to this company. And I gave them the notice that ten years is in May. Told them how to, how to bring up the redline version. And then they always send it to their attorney, send it back again, and they're ready to go.
All right, super.
Uh, just for the public's knowledge, uh, this was one of the least extensive and one that actually gave us some. Uh, just for the public's knowledge, uh, this was one of the least extensive and one that actually gave us some sort of a number to renew what was not to exceed, um, but we also had great recommendations from people that it worked for, so uh that's why choice was made for this one.
The other thing was, was kind of key there too, is they have travel expenses and both of the people working for us are going to be within a two-hour drive, so.
Really cut the, really cut the expenses to travel. The other companies would have had a lot of people there. All right, um, any other thing, motion to approve um this motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All of the favors, should we by five, by saying aye?
Aye.
Vote same sign?
I do have one last question. I think they're gonna post this before we next week or two?
I would think so.
Okay.
My, my goal is to, to get the same sign before I leave this evening and I'll give you enough attention.
What he's, what he's saying about being posted, it's posted and there'll be a description of, of what we would like to see in superintendent who's putting that piece together, but that does not mean that that description cannot be altered as we have some public meetings and get it put from the beginning. So um we're not trying to keep anybody out, but we're trying to move things for, things forward as quickly as possible. Good point, Steve.
That's, that's all.
Okay, um, I entertain motion, go into executive session. And that will be acting taken. So.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all of the favors, should we by five, by saying aye?
Aye.
All of the opposed, same sign? Thanks, everyone.
Yes, entertain a motion to call us back into open session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, say a sign. Right of session.
Okay, Chairman, I make a recommendation that the board approve personnel item number one, retirements as discussed in the executive session.
Discussion. All those who have been voting for motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Our motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Make a recommendation that board approve personnel item number two, resignations as discussed in the executive session.
Discussion. If none, entertain a motion. To approve this item.
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Make a recommendation that the board approve, first of all, there are no terminations for item number three, recommendation of item number four recommendations is to approve as discussed in the executive session.
Entertain a motion to approve as discussed in the... Bring to session. entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All close.
I'm pleased to do your...
Okay, aye.
All right, we're pulling one out to vote separately, that is for the recommendation to approve as discussed in the executive session.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second? Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any more discussion? Any... All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
All right, and then finally, make a recommendation that the board approve personnel item number five, renewals as discussed in the executive session.
Motion, the here motion to approve. Uh, renewals.
Most.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those close, say a sign. Um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
All in favor head to the door.
Head to the door.